Good morning. It is 11:30. Pursuant to the appointment of the State Board, the following are members of this committee. As the board member assigned to this committee, I will serve as your chair. Ms. Ally Reed, please call the roll to determine a quorum.
Thank you. Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Director Husky?
Here.
Mr. Lanham?
Yes.
Ms. Maxwell?
Here.
Ms. Morrison? Ms. Morrison? Sarah. You're on mute, Sarah. I wonder if she can hear us. We'll come back. Ms. Owen?
Here.
And Ms. Gates?
Absent.
So we have six members present.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Members, I'd like to invite you individually at this time to introduce yourselves. If you'll share your name and your current role and anything else that you'd like to share with us. Just jump right in. Whoever would like to go first?
I'll go first.
Okay.
I am Paula Dyer, retired educator in Lewis County. The year I retired was the year COVID, so it's hard to forget that year. And my school board seat came up for election that year, and I ran. I've been given a number of three votes. Actually, in my second term now, I was just re-elected. And yes, we are huge record bans.
Thank you so much.
My name is Tom Lanham. I live in West Tennessee, chairman of the Gibson County Special School District. This is my 11th year, 10th year as a chairman. Our board is around seven members, and I've got two daughters that actually work in the school system.
Thank you so much.
I'm Stephanie Husky. I'm Director of Schools here in Sevier County. This is my 32nd year of being an educator. I started as a high school principal and co- or sorry, high school teacher and coach, then was a high school principal after that. Worked in the central office a little bit and been superintendent here in Sevier County for four years.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Owen. I'm Senior Policy Director at the Department of Education, and I am Commissioner Reynolds Designee to this committee.
Thank you. And Sarah, can you hear us?
I can hear you on my phone. I don't know why. I haven't used WebEx on this new laptop in a while. And of course, I didn't allow enough time to get in and troubleshoot, so I apologize.
No worries.
Hear me. I can hear you on my phone. It's good to see everyone. And yeah, I'm Sarah Morrison. I'm our executive director at the State Board. And did you ask for anything else, Anna, or just her name?
Anything else you'd like to share, Sarah?
Well, I'm liking Stephanie's orange. I was looking at my bracket earlier. It's circled in Tennessee. I have them going all the way.
Okay. Thank you. Ally, would you like to say something?
Sure. I'm Ally Reed. I'm the Director of Engagement and Accountability for the State Board, and I have the Florida educators going all the way. So I'll accept the orange and just use it slightly differently for my purposes.
Well, I'm Anna Maxwell, and I am a State Board of Education member. I retired from 33 years in education in 2022. I lived through the two years of COVID as director before I retired, and that was enough for me. So I really enjoy being retired and getting to meet new people, former educators, and those who are very passionate about education, whether regardless of the role. So if you'll just bear with me, Ally has been a tremendous help to me, and we will get this meeting started.
As this committee is meeting virtually, we have prepared a statement of necessity. Ms. Reed, please read the statement.
Thank you. The Tennessee State Board of Education School Board Training Advisory Committee called an electronic meeting at 11:30 a.m. Central Time today, March 21st, 2025. This meeting is called to review applications submitted to the State Board by the February 15th deadline from prospective course providers applying for approval to offer training courses to both local school board members and charter school governing body members. Due to the time-sensitive nature of the items on the committee's agenda and due to the fact that the committee members reside across the state, it was determined that a physical forum of the members could not be assembled in Nashville for purposes of this meeting. And as such, this meeting should be conducted electronically. Notice of the meeting was posted on the State Board's website along with the agenda and instructions for accessing the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Our next item is the adoption of the committee's meeting minutes. At the committee's meeting on March 22nd, 2024, the meeting was not recorded, and so written minutes were produced. I move that the committee adopt the minutes for that meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Reed, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Husky?
Yes.
Mr. Lanham?
Yes.
Ms. Maxwell?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison? You are muted currently. It's showing. Yes, sorry. I was still troubleshooting. I couldn't get to my mute. I, yeah. Ms. Owen?
Yes.
You have six yeses.
Okay, motion carries. I move now that the recording for the April 17th, 2024 meeting serve as the minutes for that meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Reed, will you call the roll for approval?
Ms. Dyer? Didn't hear you.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Husky?
Yes.
Mr. Lanham?
Yes.
Ms. Maxwell?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Yes. You have six yeses.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Regarding today's meeting, I move that the recordings serve as the minutes for this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Reed, will you call the roll?
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Husky?
Yes.
Mr. Lanham?
Yes.
Ms. Maxwell?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
You have six yeses.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. We will now review the school board training course applications received by the February 15th deadline this year. Our purpose today is to discuss each application and determine whether additional information is needed in order to make a final recommendation on the course application. Given the number of applications received this year, I would like to propose that we develop a verbal list of those applicants for whom we would like to request additional information and those that we do not. Rather than voting on each individually and can do this through one member making the motion to add the applicant to a list. At the end, we'll take up both lists with a roll call vote to approve the next step. Without objections, Ms. Reed will walk us through a discussion on each school board training application. We will repeat this process again for the governing body training course application when we get to that part of the agenda. For Ms. Reed, I'll turn it over to you.
Yep. Any questions about the process before we jump into school board training applications? Okay, perfect. So I'll lead us through conversation about each one individually. And you do have the materials, including the rubric that our staff generated. And that is the portion that I will talk through each one, and then we'll decide to add them to the list of requesting additional information or not, and then voting at the end of this section. So our first application is for one training course from Leadership Institute. And this is a new member training orientation. Looking across their materials, there were several application strengths, and the only application question or weakness noted that aligns to the application rubric criteria was that the course materials did not include an overview of the roles and responsibilities of the Public Charter School Commission, which is a requirement outlined in State Board rule. Have it opening up to the committee for other points of feedback, questions, and then eventually a motion.
Ally, on this one, my only notation that I made, other than what through the rubric scoring, one of the slides talks about the responsibilities of a board member, and it bullet points, and it says, "makes employment decisions." And I felt like that maybe that needed a little more clarity. I'm sure probably in the presentation, they go into that a little bit more in depth, but there might need to be just a little bit more clarity there because it could be interpreted when it says "make employment decisions" that it's beyond the scope of the director or superintendent of schools. So that's just a suggestion I have.
Another suggestion in the slide deck, and I noticed across the board, not just with this provider, I think it would be wise to encourage anybody interested in doing these trainings or the governing body trainings to make sure they're up to date on the responsibilities of the State Board versus the Charter Commission. There's a slide that lists charter school authorization as a responsibility of the State Board still as opposed to authorize or evaluation. And I'll bring this up in a governing board training. But there are still some presentations that list that all 10 State Board members are appointed by the governor, and that changed a few years ago to have some appointed by members of the legislature.
Any other questions or feedback on this one? This is Leadership Institute, correct? You said, Ally?
Yes.
They, I think, listed $50 per person for the fee to include training, meals, and lodging. I was just wondering how that's possible and what financial model we're operating here. That seemed very generous. Yeah, there wasn't additional information in the application. This applicant did apply last year, and I remember going back to them to clarify. And they shared that they had funding to cover it, but can certainly request additional information. If they do, I think that's great. I just kind of made me pause because of that. Just to confirm? Yeah. Okay. Sorry, Ally, I think I've got a good flag on some of the things in here. I was just looking back at the slides. I see that too.
On the list of updates, it also still lists textbook waivers as going to the Department of Education, and as of a few years ago, they go to the State Board. So maybe just a running list of things to double check on for folks.
Appreciate those callouts. So for this one, we need a motion as to whether or not we want to go back for the additional information that we just named, or we do not need additional information.
I also move that we need additional information.
Second.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Our next one is from an applicant named Pathway to Careers. And this training course, I believe I noted that this is technically a renewal. This course, however, was previously provided by the Tennessee School Boards Association through this partnership that they had with this provider, Pathway to Careers. And now what they are proposing in the renewal is that Pathway to Careers is the direct provider, no longer being using TSBA as the middle person. So it is technically a renewal, the same course, but shifting who the direct provider is. There were several application strengths noted in the rubric, and the two application questions or weaknesses flagged based on the scoring criteria was that there is a requirement to achieve at least 80% on the end-of-course assessment to receive credit for the course, but there is not a copy of the evaluation itself that was provided in the materials. And then, secondly, the application states that it has a system for tracking course completion, but did not talk about how or when it will report completers to the Department of Education as required by State Board rule. Any other questions, comments on this one? Then we will need a motion. I'll move to collect additional information from this applicant.
I'll second.
Great. Got that one noted. Perfect. Okay, the next set is for 18, I believe it was, 18 course applications from the Tennessee School Boards Association. So we'll go through each one individually to discuss. I think there is a lot of similar feedback, if any, across these courses, and several of which are applications to renew, ones that are currently approved. So the first one is a deep dive into boardsmanship from TSBA, and noted that based on the rubric criteria, there were all strengths or meeting the criteria across the rubric, and then there were not any application questions or weaknesses noted. Anything to add on this course? Okay, we need a motion?
I move to approve this.
Second.
So we do not need additional information? Is that what you mean?
Correct.
Perfect. All right. The next course is for Advocating the Board's Vision. Similarly, all strengths noted. There were not any questions or weaknesses, and this is also an application to renew.
Make a motion and we move it to the list for no more information requested.
Second. Great. Okay. The next course is titled Basics of Boardsmanship. This is also a renewal, though I did note that this course is being renamed. It is currently named E-Boardsmanship, but is the same course. And again, all strengths, no questions or weaknesses noted based on the rubric.
Make a motion. It is added to the list for no more information requested.
Second. Thank you. The next course is the Board Chairman Seminar. This is also an application to renew, and again, noting that it is currently named Board Chairman Workshop, so this changes the name of it. But this application met all the criteria of the rubric. There were no questions or weaknesses noted. I'll make a motion to add it to the list for no further information.
Second.
The next course from TSBA is titled Board Policy and Operations. This is an application to renew, and there were no questions or weaknesses noted.
Motion to add. Go right in. Of no new information needed.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Okay. The next course is called Board/Supervisor Relations. It is an application to renew and did not have any questions or weaknesses noted based on the criteria of the rubric.
Make a motion that we add to the list for no more information needed.
Second. Thank you. The next course is titled Charter Schools in Tennessee: Essential Knowledge for Board Members. This is a new training course that they are adding and also met the criteria of the rubric. There were not any questions or weaknesses noted. I'll make a motion to add it to the list for no more information.
Second.
Thank you. The next course by TSBA is titled Ethics: The Cornerstone of Effective Governance. This is a new course that they are adding, and there were not any questions or weaknesses noted.
I move to accept as submitted.
Second.
The next course is the Leadership Conference, and this is a renewal application. And it did meet the criteria of the rubric. No questions or weaknesses noted.
Move to add it to the list of no further information.
Second.
Hey, Ally, I've got a question.
Yes.
A deep dive into boardsmanship. Did we do that one?
Did I miss one?
I don't know. I'll make sure.
Oh, it's titled A Deep Dive, so we did it first. Yes.
I was just going down through my list.
Yeah, you're good. Okay, we just did Leadership Conference. All right, the next one from TSBA is Legal Issues Impacting School Boards. This is an application to renew. It did meet the criteria. There were not any questions or weaknesses noted.
Make a motion. We add it to the list for no more information needed.
Second. Then we have Legislative and Legal Institute by the Tennessee School Boards Association. This is an application to renew. The materials met the criteria of the rubric, did not note any questions or weaknesses. Motion to move forward with no further information needed.
Second.
Thank you. The next one is the New Member Orientation by TSBA. It is an application to renew. There were several strengths that aligned to the criteria of the rubric, and there is one note here regarding the course completion hours. And while the majority of the content is aligned to the requirements in State Board rule, the content did not include details about the Tennessee Public Charter School Commission as required in the rule.
Make a motion that we add it to the list needing more information.
Second.
Great. Okay. The next course by TSBA is School Law. This is an application to renew, and there were not any questions or weaknesses noted. Motion to move to the list of no additional.
Second.
Thank you. Next course is Strategic Planning: A Joint Venture. This is also an application to renew, though there is a slight title change. The materials met the requirements of the rubric, did not note any questions or weaknesses here.
I move to accept as submitted.
Second. Great. Next for TSBA is the Summer Law Institute, also an application to renew, and there were not any questions or weaknesses noted. Motion to move forward as submitted.
Second.
The next course is Teaming and the School Board by TSBA. It is also an application to renew, and there were not any questions or weaknesses noted.
Make a motion. We add it to the list for no more information requested.
Second.
Thank you. The next course by TSBA is the Board's Role in School Finance. This is also an application to renew, and there were not any questions or weaknesses noted.
Motion to move it to the list of no further information needed.
Second.
Okay, thank you. The final course from TSBA is titled Understanding Tennessee's K-12 Funding Formula. This is a new training course that is proposed, and the criteria met, or rather, the materials met the criteria of the rubric. There were not any questions or weaknesses noted.
Make a motion. We add it to the list for no more information.
That is the end of our list.
Okay, so I'll move to notify the application of items that need to provide additional information. To provide that information, Ally, help me with my wording if I need to state that more clearly.
I can name the items.
Thank you.
So the ones that we identified for requesting additional information is Item A, Item B, and Item N, as in Nancy.
Yes, so I move that we approve that list to notify those applicants for further information. Do I have a second?
Second.
And Ms. Reed, will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Husky?
Yes.
Mr. Lanham?
Yes.
Ms. Maxwell?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
You have six yeses.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Now, if we will proceed to the next section on our agenda, and Ally will take us through those as well.
Yes, and just one quick note before we transition into that. So in terms of the process, we will go back with the notes that we discussed in this meeting to the applicant. They'll have a brief window to provide any updated materials, which will then be shared back with you in advance of our April meeting. And so in the April meeting, you'll make your final decisions in terms of which courses we are recommending for approval to the State Board.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next set is our Charter School Governing Body Training Applications. And unfortunately, our Charter School Governing Body member of this committee was unable to join us today. But I'm sure as you were reviewing the materials, you noted there are a lot of similarities, which is why this committee is reviewing both across the two different types. So starting with Item A, this is an application from Early Bird Learning. And they do have one course that they are proposing. And in review of the materials, this is a new course, and there were a few application questions or weaknesses noted based on the rubric criteria, one being that the pre- and post-reflection documents did include an opportunity to assess the participant's achievement of stated learning objectives, but did not include an evaluation of the course provider's effectiveness. So one small adjustment to make there. And then, secondly, the course provider does have an effective method for tracking member completion, but there was, now I'm reading my notes. I think I might have made a mistake here. I think that it was missing a process for reporting that to the authorizer. But now I need to double check because my statement says that they had both. Any questions, comments on this one? I think with this one, I need to go back and confirm that they had that. Depending on, we do have at least one clear note, and then depending on a revisit of the materials, I will confirm if they had the reporting requirement addressed for sharing with charter school authorizers. So we just need a motion as to next steps for this one. I'll move for additional information to be requested.
Second.
Depending on my finding, it'll be one or two pieces of information. Okay, thank you. The next set here that we're looking at is from the Facility Resource Center. They did submit four training courses for review. And the first one is titled A Recipe for Financing. And this is a new application. I did note in the rubric that I shared with you all that this applicant did mark that the course was for renewal. However, they had previously been approved by the Tennessee Charter School Center, who had the responsibility of approving courses prior to the State Board. So I think there was some confusion there. This course has not been approved as part of the State Board's process that's been in place for the last few years. So it is, for us, a new training course. In terms of review of the materials, several application strengths and the question or weakness that was noted, we see this across several, is that the document for training evaluation, while it includes a review of the learning objectives, it does not have an evaluation of the course provider's effectiveness.
I move that we ask for additional information regarding that.
Second.
Thank you. Next course for the Facility Resource Center is titled Charter School Facilities. This is the new course for the State Board to review, and similar piece of feedback, or rather, the exact same piece of feedback for this training course, being that the evaluation materials was lacking in evaluation of the course provider's effectiveness.
Make a motion. We move it to the list for requested, if we weren't requesting information.
Second.
Ally, can I jump in with one question on that? Because I didn't think they have the same evaluation form across these different courses. And they have a question that says, "How useful was the information or content delivered?" That doesn't exactly get at what you're asking, but I think could get at with just a little tweaking. I don't think it would take much to adjust that.
Yep.
I'm sure you saw that, but...
I will add that in the feedback, thank you. Just as general feedback, especially with things about facilities at, you know, non-traditional sites, they list some considerations for when you're selecting a site. And one of the things that comes up is school security. And I'm sure they just meant it at a high level. They mentioned key FOBs and a few other things. So, just making sure everybody's aware of all of the legal requirements for traditional LEA-run schools and public charter schools around school security, because we've had a number of laws passed around that in recent years. So, it would go, you know, well beyond some of the points that might have been mentioned here. But that's after you select the site and you begin to develop it.
Yep, I think that what that is addressing in the slide decks is very early on, and absolutely, to your point, Amy, there will be several more steps involving ensuring security, but we can absolutely make a note to just confirm that they will differentiate there for attendees. Okay. The third training course proposed by the Facility Resource Center is titled Facilities Financing. This is also a new course, and same piece of feedback regarding the training evaluation.
I move to request additional information.
Second.
Thank you. The final course for the Facility Resource Center is titled Long-Term Replication, also a new training course, and the only piece of feedback is the same regarding the evaluation materials.
I move to request additional information.
Second. Excellent, thank you. All right, we're moving into the next set of items from the Henson Consortium. There are three training courses from this applicant. And I'll note that this applicant is a current provider. And while these are not renewal applications, they do currently provide some training courses. So, the first one from the Henson Consortium is titled Charter School Board Governance. Again, a new course application, and there were several application questions and weaknesses when compared across the rubric criteria, including completing the application on the wrong form. While the forms are similar, they did not, they used the local school board member training form rather than the charter school governing body form. Additionally, the proposed training course has noted that it was four hours, but there was not a clear connection between the amount of time the course is proposed for compared to the amount of content that the materials suggested would be covered. Additionally, there are learning objectives stated, and within the application, that do not appear to include all of the required content, similar to what we saw for local school board members. The State Board Rule also outlines required content for charter school governing body members. And so, the materials did not include all of that required content. Additionally, the materials themselves were pretty unorganized and mismatched, and so, it's not entirely clear if the materials themselves aligned to the application that they were submitting, and provided a few examples in the notes that you received. Another piece of feedback for this one is that neither the application nor the course materials really discuss how the materials be used as part of the course. So, there are several additional materials that were provided without any clear evidence of what those are for in the application itself in terms of the agenda. And then, the applicant noted that the course completers would receive completion certificates, but they did not note the requirement to provide the list of completers to, directly to the authorizer as required in State Board Rule. Any additional questions, feedback for this applicant?
Just a question, Ally. I assume we would, if we make a motion, vote to ask for additional information as opposed to saying not ready for prime time. I mean, we give this, even though there are more issues potentially to iron out, we could still give them the opportunity to remedy.
I think that's up to the committee as to how you want to handle it. Certainly can decide whether or not this warrants some additional time or one that probably should consider applying again for next year.
I would say, and I'll make the motion, while there are a lot of issues, I would vote to give this applicant another chance before our next meeting to come back with a better prepared plan to address those issues, and then we can decide that if they're ready or not ready. So, I'll make the motion to request additional information.
I'll second that. I think we can put the ball in their court to decide if that's a timeframe where they can make significant revisions, or if they'd like to wait for next year.
Okay. We'll move into the next training course proposed by this provider. There was not a clear title, but given the content, I made an assumption that this is for a new governing body member training. So, that explains the question mark that you have there. But this is a new course application, not seeking to renew an existing one. And similarly, a bit of a list of questions and weaknesses, again, seeing that they completed on the incorrect application. The title of the training course is a repeat from another course application that they submitted. So, it seemed that that was just misaligned. And then, the application states that the course is for six hours, which meets the requirements of State Board Rule. However, when you total up, looking at the agenda, that does not meet the required amount of time. So, some discrepancy there. The materials, again, had learning objectives and content that appeared to cover required content for new board members, but there were some additional courses or content that was not captured in the materials that is required in State Board Rule. Additionally, the course provider's presentation deck appears to follow the provided agenda, but does not align to the title of the course. So, again, some kind of misalignment across the materials themselves. And then, similar piece of feedback, again, regarding the requirement to submit a list of completers to the authorizer as required in State Board Rule.
So, I would make a motion to send it back to the provider and let them determine whether they have enough time to satisfactorily, you know, explain, go into detail and clarify.
Second.
And then, the third and final course provided by, or applied to provide, rather, from the Henson Consortium is a new application titled Succession and Strategic Planning for Continuous Charter School Growth, Fiscal Management, and Facilities Development. This one did meet more of the criteria in terms of strengths related to the rubric. And there were only two application questions or weaknesses noted in the rubric itself, one regarding completing the application on the wrong form, and then the second one in ensuring that the list of completers is provided to the authorizer in alignment with State Board Rule.
I move to request more information.
I'll second.
The next training course is from Littleford and Associates. And they had one training course application. This one is titled Review of Board Governance Best Practices, and it is a new course application. There were a few strengths noted based on the rubric criteria and several questions and weaknesses again here. So, the first one being that the course application states that it is, the course itself is not restricted to members of purpose-preps governing body, but the materials are clearly aligned for that charter school in particular. And so, a question about, is the applicant proposing to customize materials for each charter school interested in attending this training? Or is it actually meant to be limited to purpose-preps governing body members only, which is allowable, but just needs to be noted? Another question or piece of feedback is that there is a description of the instructional strategies and the course materials, but it's difficult to determine if the training course covers the topics with sufficient depth, because there was not actual materials themselves provided. And additionally, while the application has four hours proposed for the length of time, it does not appear to cover that amount of time with the content that the application stated. There's also a course fee for $5,800 for the four virtual, four-hour virtual workshop, but does not provide an explanation for that fee. And we'll also note that is quite high in comparison to other training courses that we have approved. Additionally, the application names a $2,500 fee if focus groups or interviews are conducted before the workshop, but it's not clear if that's an additional cost or an alternative. So, just some questions around the costs itself and what's covered. And then, also have questions around how many years the applicant is seeking to apply for approval of this course, given the content. It appears that it likely would be a one-year course approval, which we can do up to three years. But just really want to clarify if that's the intent, or if they are wanting to update the material each year, if they're seeking longer than a year approval. And then, the application states that they'll submit a training completion log to the Department of Education rather than the respective authorizer as required in State Board Rule.
Make a motion that we move this to list for requesting more information?
That's it for this applicant. And then, the final set is from the Tennessee Charter School Center. And there are seven training courses that they have submitted for review. The first one is called Building a Highly Effective Board. This is a new training course proposed, and several application strengths. And in terms of questions or weaknesses noted, we have that there is an effective method for evaluating achievement of the learning objectives, but the evaluation does not assess course provider's effectiveness. And then, secondly, there's not a clear plan for how they will provide a list of completers to the respective charter school authorizer as required in State Board Rule.
I move to request additional information.
Second.
The next course is titled, from the Charter School Center, Governance and State Law. This is also a new course, and same two pieces of feedback regarding evaluating the course provider's effectiveness and reporting completers to the school authorizer.
Make a motion that we move it for more information?
I'll second. This is also one where I do want to note, they may want to update some of their language about how the State Board is appointed. And there's also a little bit of, they talk about like the department setting policies or the central office setting policies. Just be clear that it's the State Board and the local board that are setting policies, and the department and the central office are setting procedures. So, kind of minor clarifications like that in some governance language.
Right, and they also need to update the TISA-based funding. They have an outdated amount there on one of their slides.
And to confirm, this is in the Governance and State Law, Ina, correct?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Move to request additional information.
If we have a second already on that one. So, the next one from the Charter School Center we have is Board Recruitment and Maintenance. This is also a new training course, and same two pieces of feedback regarding the evaluation materials and reporting to the charter school authorizer.
Make a motion that we move it to requesting more information?
Second.
Thank you. The next one is titled Support and Accountability for the Executive Director from the Charter School Center. It is a new training course, and again, same two pieces of feedback regarding evaluating the course provider's effectiveness and reporting to the charter school authorizer the completers.
I'll move to request more information.
Second.
Thank you. The next training course from the Charter School Center is titled Great Board Members and Great Board Meetings. This is also a new training course proposed. And we do have the same, again, two pieces of feedback regarding the course provider's effectiveness evaluation and reporting to the charter school authorizer.
I'll move to request more information.
Second.
Then we have Preparing for Growth and Change from the Charter School Center, another new application, same two pieces of feedback regarding evaluating the course provider's effectiveness and reporting course completers to the authorizer.
I'll move to request more information.
And I'll second.
Okay, and the final training course from the Charter School Center is titled State Law. This is also a new training course, and only one piece of feedback here, but same regarding reporting to the charter school authorizer.
And I'll add double-checking here, again, State Board appointments, the role of different agencies and organizations. They also reference TISA as like a forthcoming formula, so that language may be a few years old, and they can double-check to Ina's point earlier. And with that, I will move to request additional information.
And I'll second. Okay, so I move to notify the applicants of the items. Ally, will you read that list? Or are those all-inclusive items A through P on the governing... Just a second. The governing body training courses. So, I move that we send those for more information. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Reed, if you'll call the role, please?
Ms. Dyer.
Yes.
Ms. Husky.
Yes.
Mr. Lannam.
Yes.
Ms. Maxwell.
Yes.
Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
Ms. Owen.
Yes.
You have six guesses.
Thank you, Ally. Members, this concludes our meeting. Our next committee meeting is April 23rd, and we will decide which training courses we will recommend for approval by the State Board. Does anyone have any other business or comments that they would like to make? Okay, seeing as done, then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much for your participation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good weekend.
Too.